I love that dog.
I think it's just like, he's so big.
Yeah, I don't think he realizes that at all.
No, he could have spun on the leg and he's like, almost as wide as his head.
Sheriff said he was a guard dog, too, got a hold of him.
That's one of my favorites in the whole pet lineup here.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to reconvene Commissioner Loeb.
Okay, so essentially, I was just hoping we could have a discussion up here and I could probe for where folks are at prior to actually making a motion. As I mentioned, there's one document that I circulated up here when the meeting started that is what was proposed, or it certainly ought to be what was proposed and placed on the agenda. There is another that's got highlighting, I think that is quite directly, I think it's going to expose a loophole that will, in all likelihood, cause us problems. And when I say cause us problems, we have one pet store that I'm aware of now. I'm concerned that this would suggest to other pet stores that are being shut out by the other municipalities, the other 67 or so municipalities. Brevard County is a safe haven because they've taken the approach that having a loophole is better than having nothing at all. And I don't want to see one blossom into six where they're sourcing dogs in the same way that one is. So it's a great concern to me. If we have to go in that direction, it might be better than nothing, but I don't know that it's a whole lot better than nothing. I am concerned, though, that if we start to look to restrict sales to only in county breeders, I am flatly convinced, and I'm taking my commissioner hat off and putting my lawyer hat on, and if Ms. Bentley wants to differ, she's certainly free to differ, but I'm flatly convinced it would be unconstitutional for us to indicate that sales have to be from only in county breeders or from only in state breeders. I don't think that's something that's tenable. I think there'd be an injunction granted almost instantaneously if one were filed for to prohibit us from doing that. And I think essentially, we would basically be scrapping the ordinance at that point. So there's no reason to look at that. It's an idea that was floated to me, that I shot down as soon as I heard it, even though it certainly is a well-intentioned idea. I don't quite frankly care which state or which county someone gets a dog from, I care about the conditions. And what was proposed in both of these addresses the conditions, especially the one that ended up on the agenda that does not have the highlighting. That addresses the conditions because it prohibits hobby breeders from selling to pet shops. They would, by definition, be a broker, and they would not be a hobby breeder if they were to do that. So I'm just hoping I can get some comments from my colleagues up here in terms of where they're at and what their concerns are and what we need to do in order to get an effective ordinance passed.
Do you want me to go first? You sure? Okay. I probably shared some of those same concerns as you about the hobby breeders versus whether or not they should go in. And, you know, I think one thing that we keep getting away from, and unfortunately, in the state of Florida, animals are property. And I think that one thing that we always seem to be coming back to, this isn't a right for businesses as much as it is, you know, these are living, breathing beings. These aren't, whether you're an animal lover, or whether you're somebody who just kind of cares about animals, I don't know how we don't care more. These aren't lawnmower parts that you buy in a store. This isn't us regulating a business that sells widgets or pool supplies. These are living, breathing creatures that, you know, unlike us, don't have a voice. And I think that if we can't, we call them pets, state calls them property. If we can charge somebody with animal cruelty, I think that that in itself puts them in a different category. And I think we need to be cognizant of that when we talk about what we want our community to represent. So I'm in support of the ordinance. I'm okay with modifications if it gets the rest of this board here to support it. I would just, I don't want to put something in place like you that doesn't have any teeth or that still allows for these sort of things to happen, because they do happen. I mean, you can sugarcoat it any way you want and tag any four letters you want to on what you're certified and what you're not, but the reality of it is, is that there's no regulation at all. And it's okay. I mean, I remember when, we've done rescues, my family, just as a personal story, we've done rescues in my family for many, many years, and we opted this time to go to a small breeder. And it was like, it was like an inquisition, just even get a meeting and be considered to get one of these animals. And it was a small breeder that was still in the state of Florida, but we wanted a certain type of dog that didn't shed, because I have a child with an allergy, and et cetera, et cetera. But that's the kind of person, I guess, that is a good steward for the health and safety and wellbeing of those animals. And we just have to start caring about them. This isn't a Republican or Democrat thing. This isn't a capitalist versus a, you know, government regulation thing. These are living, breathing creatures that we buy for our benefit, to be a part of our family and to take care of. So I think that this is one small thing that we can do, and obviously, it's snowballing across the state, and I think it's the responsible thing to do. So I'd like to see us, hopefully, we'll get the support by next meeting. It's hard to say with other commissioners not here, but this is coming back to us. So hopefully, by then, we'll be somewhere where we can get the majority on board.
And I, you know, I'll just throw in there as well, because I think it's interesting, if nothing else, a case that I had with respect to who owned a dog that went to trial in this county. The judge, pending the outcome of the trial, ordered time sharing on the dog. So you don't do that with car parts or tractor parts. I agree with you 100% when you say that. You know, they are property, but I think that they're not run-of-the-mill property. I think there's certainly a realization in the law that there is unique personal property, works of art, things of that nature. And I think this is perhaps closer to that, maybe even a step beyond that, due to the obvious reasons. But if I'm hearing you right, you would support either, you know, either version of the ordinance, including the one that does not have hobby breeders entitled to sell to retail. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
At least as far as I stand now.
Let me frame this, first of all. I've worked with you long enough, you always know my heart. And Mr. Loeb, you know, we kind of do that, the analytical thing, so I know you'll get this. So I'm going to go through my thought process here of what I'm thinking through. One, we're doing a legislative intent, so whatever we put forward, we can't add to, but we can take away from. And we have two commissioners missing, so I'm just a little cautious about that, too, because I know this will change as it moves forward. So whatever we move forward with, we can always pull away from it if we change our mind later as we start getting more information. That's the beauty of this, having such a long period of time with meetings, it gives us time to really make good decisions when we enact this. So on that note, I got thinking about this, and here's a couple of my struggles. I don't want to put pet stores out of business, but I do want to stop or hinder or put a pause on these puppy mills issues. I really do. So that's, I'm hoping we're all after the same goal, is stopping the abuse of animals. Is this going to be perfect? No. But hopefully, it'll bring some solution to stop it. I do struggle with the USDA issue. And actually, when I came in, I brought to myself one with a licensed commercial breeder and one without a licensed commercial breeder, which is based on Mr. Loeb's, one that he sent us, and I made some changes in that. And we'll go over that here in a few minutes and see if we can work something out. But I'm troubled that they don't inspect properly. I'm troubled that we have a national problem with this and that it's getting put on us for not having the appropriate things done to take care of these types of situations. And if it was in place and people were obeying the law, this wouldn't even be a discussion. You know, here's another struggle that I have. We're talking about, okay, the hobby breeders, I'm probably not going to vote for this if we don't allow some rights with the hobby breeders. Let me tell you why. I'm at the north end, we have a lot more farm area, and a lot of people do this, and they love their pets. And I have a sweet little pet store in Hopkins, and we visit around, because I'm trying to find pet stores that sell pets. And this was the only one I could find, so we just went to one, and they didn't have any in there. I said, "Well, do you guys ever sell dogs?" And they said, "Well, once in a while, we'll have somebody whose dog will have puppies, and they'll bring it in, and we'll go ahead and sell it for them." And these are good people. And you know what? I don't want to stop that. It's a hobby breeder, they have the pets, and they're doing it local area. And again, my purpose of this isn't to put good pet stores and good people out of business. Please don't shake your head, no. Please don't do that, because this is what I've experienced now, and it's what I'm seeing. So it's my testimony on what I know here. And then, Mr. Loeb, we'll have to work through this, but I'm also concerned if we do this, and maybe we can work it out with Eden, if we're going to have a possible lawsuit or break into some kind of commerce laws.
Can I address a couple of things?
Let me go through this first, and then you go through it with me, sir, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's one thing I was thinking about. And then I also have a real struggle that there isn't regulations on rescue organizations, because if we get rid of every other competitive ability to get puppies to the public, we've started a whole nother monopoly. And through my long life, I've noticed that if I follow the money, that even good people end up getting corrupt if there's money involved. So I've got a little bit of struggle there of creating a monopoly situation, so we're probably going to have to work on some types of regulations, not just people rescuing and giving them out. But I think once you become a business to where you're breeding and selling dogs, you've just lost the ability to be under that covering. And that's something we're going to have to talk about here. I also don't want to regulate how people sell. And here's my big, you know, thing with this. Let's say I hit my 80s and I decide I want to start, you know, putting sweet little schnauzers together and selling them for a few dollars and take care of them. I don't want the people coming in my house to buy them. So I would rather have some kind of open, public place where I can do this. So that's part of my concern with that, too, sir. So again, I do want to do what you're wanting to do and start working on getting rid of the problem of these abuse with animals and puppy mills. And I don't, and I couldn't even find any breeders in the state. So I think we do have something we've got to work through and think through. So I don't know how to do all that, but I do know that right now, from where I'm at, if we don't protect the hobby breeders here, I'm not going to support it. But I do support something here that's going to move forward with some kind of regulations in place.
Okay.
So a few things. And I think I've even spoken with the one hobby breeder who may have stepped out since I spoke with her that came up earlier. Every version that I proposed of this ordinance has some mechanisms in place to protect hobby breeders. I have never, nor do I intend to ever cut hobby breeders out of the equation. If someone wants to pay for a polygraph, I'll let them strap me up, and I'll pass with flying colors.
I believe that.
What I tried to do, because I heard your concerns in the very first meeting on January 8th with respect to that, I raised that limit from 20 to 48.
You did.
If the place of sale is the area of consternation, I'm happy to look at some mechanism to change that, but part of the place of sale, the reason that I'm looking for that, is because that allows the folks that are looking to buy a dog to see the conditions in which the dog is actually raised, to ensure exactly that, it's not a puppy mill. They can look at the mom, look at the dad, and really have a better understanding in terms of where the dog is coming from. Anyone that wants to breed schnauzers under any version of this that's been proposed or is proposed or has even been under discussion to any extent, anyone can breed schnauzers. They can breed, at this point, if what's on the agenda were to pass, they can breed 48 schnauzers a year and sell them to anyone out of their house. The problem is, when you're looking at taking hobby breeders who don't sell to retail and saying, "Well, I want to protect them by allowing them to sell to retail," you're not really protecting them, because we've heard from hobby breeders today, we heard from hobby breeders on January 8th, and none of the legitimate hobby breeders, none of them, no one that came here, assuming they're all legitimate, let's give them the benefit of the doubt and say they all are, none of them sell retail. Their concern is being able to continue selling to folks that they're able to vet in just the way that our chair indicated she was vetted when she was looking to buy. I just don't want to create a solution to a non-existent problem that simply opens up a loophole. And what I mean by that is, if we say, "Okay, now they can sell to retail," we don't have the ability to restrict that to hobby breeders that our dear sheriff can go and inspect. We have to allow that universally throughout Florida, throughout the country, because then there is an enforceability issue with it. We can't say only those inspected by Brevard County Sheriff's Office. That will get tossed yesterday. Were we allowed to do that? I'd be perfectly happy doing that. I'm not trying to cut out the out of county or the out of states, but if it has the impact of doing that and that were lawful, okay, fine. But I'm not able to compromise, because that would be unconstitutional and enforceable. The way that this is written, if someone wants to challenge it, it's going to be upheld. I've looked at it, I've had plenty of attorneys, both in the county and out of the county, look at this, and everyone has told me, without exception, that they don't have concerns in terms of the constitutionality or the enforceability of this particular ordinance as it's proposed right now. If we were to change something or expand something, that might change. The surest way to ensure that it's not going to be enforceable, that it's going to get thrown out instantaneously, before that, we'd almost certainly have an injunction prohibiting us from enforcing it until such time as it ends up being thrown out. If we added something essentially restricting it to in-state or in-county businesses only. So I'd like to work with you to accomplish this, and if the real consternation is where the sale can take place, you know, I'm flexible in terms of what we do with that, but I guess to go back to creating a monopoly for rescues and for animal shelters, I don't think the rescues and the shelters, and I've worked with a rescue that's sitting in the front here, I've never been privileged enough to adopt a dog from them, but I've donated my time with them over a period of years, they're not looking to get more dogs. They want to place the dogs they have, and they're not saying, "Gee, what can we charge for the dog?" They're looking at best to recoup the expenses that they had in treating that dog with veterinary medicine and maybe with food, maybe not even, and they're just trying not to burn a hole. A lot of these folks, and I would venture to say every single one that's sitting up front, with the exception of Mr. Berman, no offense to you, sir, everyone in this front row, I would presume, is very likely losing money, and substantial money, every year because they work rescue. These aren't folks that are out there for profit. I think just about all of them are either retired or semi-retired, and they're doing this because, God bless them, they're decent human beings and have the heart to do it. In terms of having the sheriff inspect rescues, if you want to put something like that forward and it's reasonably limited so that it's not overly onerous, I'm happy to support that separately, but I don't know how you could really do that to address the same concerns. And the reason I say that is because none of these folks have 100-plus dogs in their houses, none of these folks have 40-plus dogs in their houses. I've been to some of their houses, and, you know, they may have four or five dogs, which is kind of a menagerie in my mind, but that's it. These aren't the profit-seeking, you know, evildoers that you would run across in other industries. This is not, and I would say with Sheriff Ivy Shelter, for instance, in the SPCA, they're not looking at profiting, they're looking at placing the dogs in good homes as quickly as they can while ensuring that they're being cared for properly. So I just don't have that concern with rescue. If you see rescues starting to charge 1,500 bucks for a dog, then come back here, and I'll drop the hammer on them myself, but I don't see that happening. I really don't see that happening. We do know, as opposed to a hypothetical problem, that there is a problem right now with the one and only pet shop, of which I'm aware in the county, with where they're sourcing dogs from, to say that we don't know where, you know, other groups are sourcing their dogs. The problem is, it can't be any worse than what we do know with the group that I'm looking at placing the regulations to impact. So if it's a public place or something along those lines, I'm happy to be flexible to whatever degree we can, if there's some thought you have on that front. But I think allowing them to sell retail is a very, very bad idea, because, again, none of them do. We've heard that again and again, except from folks that are from out of county who have the pet industry shirts on. None of them do it. None of them do it. None of the folks here, none of the folks that have come and spoken. I'm happy to entertain any reasonable exception to allow for the folks that are here to continue to do business as they're doing business, but I just don't want to create a loophole that's going to come back to bite us and effectively render this entire ordinance either worthless or of minimal worth.
Well, a couple of things. If none of them do, then it's not going to be an issue if we put it in there.
It will, because the concern I have is there, as we've heard from folks, the folks that are USDA licensed breeders are going to, as we've heard, literally strike through the breeder number and write hobby breeder.
Right, but Mr. Loeb, I get that, and I understand the passion on this, but I'm trying to frame it. It's like, we have trouble with drunk drivers, and most of them happen at night, so let's just make it nobody drives at night. You know, I get it, it's a bad thing, but I can't take out the good people that have potential good with it. And you know what? If we do this, and we need to tweak it later, we found out we've got a problem, I don't mind bringing it up, then we'll change it again. But I do have a legitimate concern that it could cause harm to good people who want to do this. And if we get the other types of, and I really have problems with brokers anyways, if we get those all out of the picture, it might open up more of a market for hobby breeders to be able to sell in retail stores from in the local area. So I don't want to take away the rights of people, and that's, but I do want to protect dogs, but I'm really careful with that right now, because I think we could do this and really take away some rights of some unforeseen things moving into the future. The rescue people now, I think they're wonderful. I have no problem with them trying to make a lot of money, but I'm telling you, sure as I'm sitting here, that as soon as this happens, there's going to be groups that raise up, because it's a way now to make money that's not regulated, and it's a monopoly. So just from watching business and how that runs, I think we've just got to watch that moving forward. So those are just a couple of my things, and, sir, again, this is legislative intent, so if you'd be willing to at least go through this with me on yours, and we could talk about it.
If it's okay, can we start with the ordinance, and this should be the one that's on the agenda, that just doesn't have any highlighting, and then...
Yeah, I'm not, if you guys put that through, you can. I won't vote for that when we get it through to the other part, because I really do believe that I need to get the license, I'm not the licensed commercial, I'm actually caving on the licensed commercial breeders. But on the hobby breeders, I just don't think I can do it and sleep at night. And I don't have an agenda, I don't know a lot of hobby breeders.
Let me ask you if I may.
Yes, sir.
What, in theory, what is your concern with respect to someone that's going to get hurt? I just, I'm really having a hard time wrapping my head as to some proposed individual or entity that's going to be hurt if we pass it as it is.
I don't know that people don't breed dogs in their home, because a hobby breeder is four female breeding dogs maximum. After that, they become, have them to be licensed. So as far as the definition, if they have four females, and I know you were kind of very sweet about the 48 dogs, but I actually even want to put a little thing in there that they can't have more than female dogs, four female dogs are breeding either, because I think...
Well, that's also something I've discussed with Joe Hellebrand, the Director of Animal Services, and Sheriff Ivy. Anytime we say the number of breeding females, we're essentially putting it in a place where we can't enforce it. That's why we have the number of puppies, because you can show up and say, "One, two, three, four, five, 10."
Someone told me that the four females was better.
Well, let me explain to you why we did what we did.
I'm fine either way, I was just trying to get a little more protective. But let me just tell you the things that I was thinking through, and you can shoot them down or whatever, but I want to go through this with you. So I'm going to go with the one that you gave us, sir, and I'm going to tell you what I just did, and made a few additions.
Yes, ma'am.
On page six.
Yes, ma'am.
You already put a line through, this does not include any persons with entities that sell cats or dogs to pet stores, correct? You marked that out.
Is that, because I, actually, can I just pass this over and make sure that's correct? I don't want to indicate something that's not accurate.
You are so nice.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If it's not there, it's not there, but...
Let me get the one you gave us. Which one are you offering off?
I apologize.
It's okay. This is the first one you gave us?
This, yeah.
Can we do the second one you gave us?
Yeah, the second one is this one that has the highlighting.
Let's see what I got here with this.
Thank you. And the second one would allow for retail sales by hobby breeders.
Right, and again, this is legislative intent, and this could change later, too. Probably. Sometimes just made a couple little additions in here that I think were really appropriate. Let me find it. You're fine with that, so I'll...
Now, if we allowed for only, or if we allowed hobby breeders to retail, I mean, are we legally allowed to restrict that to state?
What do you mean?
Like, if we allowed for, I don't want to allow for hobby breeders to sell to retail, but if that's, you know, all we can get for now, then we have to take it, because we already know where the other commissioners pretty much stand. So would we allow, would we be allowed to restrict that, buying from hobby breeders within the state, at the very least, nothing?
That's what Commissioner Loeb is referencing about the interstate commerce and the constitutional violation.
That's the part that's concerning to me.
Yeah, and if we could, believe me, I'd be the first one to jump on board, but there's just no way.
Well, you know what we could do? We could make it so that they have to visit the place that the dogs are being bred, the store owners, or if they're locally, you know, it's easy enough for the person with the dog to go in. So if they're locally here, they can go to the pet store to maybe put on consignment or sell it, but if the pet store is looking for hobby breeder dogs, that they go and purchase the dogs themselves out of state, so they're actually seeing it. That could be something we could look at. But on page eight, sir, item F, since we're talking about this, I think would have to be taken out, because it's just talking about prohibition on public sales. And then if you move over to, and I want you to know, you've had me do more research on this than I know I'd have to do, item G, I added in a little thing on there. I know you already drew a line through, including, no, you didn't, including but not limited to one that operates in conjunction with a pet store, other retail stores. I wanted to add the line in there, unless the shelter is operating as a business of breeding and selling pets to the public, I think then that they change personalities.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
If you go to the definition of animal shelter on five, and then also animal rescue organization on page four, I think that obviates the concern, because on, let's start with four, on animal rescue organization. It says, "This term includes neither any broker nor any entity that obtains dogs or cats from any source for payment or compensation." And it also indicates, let's see here, "Does not intentionally or willfully breed animals." So it prohibits them from doing that, and then if we go to five for animal shelter, it also excludes those that willfully cause dogs or cats to reproduce.
Okay.
So that's essentially already integrated in there.
You're correct, sir, you do have that in there. That's good. Okay. So I think if we just go with the one that you brought the changes with, and just maybe remove item F moving forward, or you can leave it in, and it can be a discussion later if you want, because, again, we can remove them later, and...
Well, let me, because I want to...
That's my struggle.
I want to talk about the item you mentioned, as far as having the pet store mandated to visit the actual source of the puppies. And I don't, what I don't want to see happen is, okay, I went to Choice Puppies, where they're a broker, and you don't see anything in terms of the original condition or where the dogs come from. I'm just, I'm trying, I'm struggling a bit to figure out how we would go about phrasing it and whether, and I'd have to defer to Ms. Bentley on whether there would be a mechanism by which we could really compel that in terms of forcing a, or obligating, a retail pet shop in Brevard County to visit any and all breeders that they source from.
Well, I think you're moving into undoubted territory there. I haven't seen any cases involving that particular requirement. It would certainly have enforcement problems, I think, because how are you going to prove that they went and picked them up and visited and all of that?
The other concern I have right off the bat is, as far as interstate commerce, there's certainly going to be a disproportionate impact on those businesses that are out of state in favor of those that are in state. So whether it would be a successful challenge or not, I would certainly anticipate there would be a challenge on that ground. I'm just, I'm struggling to try to make something that's workable with you here.
Well, we can come back and really spend a lot of time on that, but, again, anything we put in here, we can take out, but we can't add anything to it once we send it forward.
Yeah, that's my concern. I just, I don't want to neglect to put something in here that we really ought to have to prevent something like that from occurring.
Gotcha. So we can even put that in right now and find out we're not allowed to do it and take it out. Just an idea. Right, Eden?
I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
Well, let me ask you a different question, okay? And I kind of put this in there to give us a little wiggle room if we needed to do something in the future. I don't know if it's going to help or not. In the definition section, which maybe is not the most ideal place to have it, on page five, where it defines hobby breeder, and let me show you, because this, I don't know that this is the version you have, I think I emailed this to you, but this is not the one that ended up on the agenda, this is kind of an alternate. I indicated hobby breeder sales to pet stores are expressly conditioned upon compliance with any and all, I'm sorry, registration, inspection, and compliance requirements put in place by the Board, the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, or any other entity lawfully entitled to regulate such activity. Would that allow us, then, to have, perhaps, if BCSO is so inclined, BCSO set up a compliant structure whereby the individual would have to visit the original source of the animals? structure whereby the individual would have to visit the original source of the animals? I mean, could we go through it that way and just kind of leave the ordinance as is, presuming the sheriff is inclined to do that down the road, or if we're inclined to do that down the road? Yes, sir. Can we have him up?
Yeah. You could, can you come up so we can hear you? Do you mind?
On the face of it, that might work, but the enforcement of it is a different issue.
I'm kind of worried about it.
Oh, that dog.
So we'd like to hear from Junie first, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. Not a problem. Up, 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 come on.
There you go, okay. All right, now I'm listening, sir.
Aww.
Sit down, big boy. Okay, sir, I'm sorry. I did not hear you, I heard you say, Sheriff Ivy is, I'm open to it, but...
Yeah, so what I'm, what I'm looking at here, I kind of put essentially something of a catch-all in a modification of what was actually on the agenda, in case we had to go here. And part of it reads, the pertinent part, hobby breeder sales to pet stores are expressly conditioned upon compliance with any and all registration, inspection, and compliance requirements put in place by the Board, the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, or any other entity lawfully entitled to regulate such activity. And my question is whether or not you would be inclined to, through BCSO mandate, that the individuals that own pet stores here physically visit the pet stores wherever they may be located?
I don't have a problem with that, as long as our attorney thinks it's doable, and certainly our team can oversight over that.
Because if you indicate to me you're happy to do it, and if you indicate to me we're in reasonably good grounds to force it...
But you have to adopt the ordinance to create that.
Frank would give me more money to do it.
Yeah, I think we need a separate ordinance for that.
Yeah, that's...
By the look of your budget.
Well, what about...
As we've said earlier, and I want to commend our team, Doug and Chris have done a great job at researching this and looking at all the different angles of it, but as we said at the very beginning, our ultimate goal is to close puppy mills down, and I know that's the goal of everybody sitting up there on the dicey. So whatever it is that we can legally do, we would be engaged in doing.
I appreciate it, Sheriff. So what about, again, because we can't add to it, we can only take away, what about including a requirement that the store owner visit each and every place of origin where puppies or kittens are purchased, on, let's say, an annual basis? Is that fair, Ms. Pritchett? Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah. And maybe in this ordinance, it can read as, you know, developed by resolution, you know, at a later date, because we got to come up with a resolution for that process, you said, right?
Well, if you require them to visit annually, then that would already be in here, as I understand what's being proposed. As I understand what's being proposed.
Okay.
You can do that. I think you may impact interstate commerce that way.
That's kind of what I'm worried about.
I think you're walking a line. Mr. Bate has an idea.
I hope.
Well, I was just going to suggest that the first option you were discussing, discussing, might be the best one, because it'll be broad enough to allow you to develop that regulation, and it's also going to be broad enough so that when it's advertised for the public hearing, you know, I think you give yourself the most opportunity that way.
I tend to agree with that, because then you can come back with the second regulation if you need to, and it doesn't open you up immediately.
Okay. I appreciate it, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. You know, we're on board.
Thank you, sir.
All right, boy.
Sure.
Just because this is, this is kind of getting into a can of worms that I'm concerned about, could I, could I ask that Janet come up for just a moment to kind of give your thoughts in terms of whether this, this is something you've come across before in other jurisdictions, and if so, how it's panned out? Because if we're about to walk on a landmine, I'd love to know it.
Would you mind just reiterating the, what you guys are discussing, just to make sure...
Sure, so essentially, what I've attached to the ordinance as it was proposed, is phrasing, reading, hobby breeder sales to pet stores are expressly conditioned upon compliance with any and all registration, inspection, and compliance, I'm sorry, compliance requirements put in place by the Board, the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, or any other entity lawfully entitled to regulate such activity. And my thought is, what we'll do is, we'll come back with a second ordinance essentially requiring the pet store owners to visit annually the place of origin that they source the dogs from, not necessarily the immediate source, as would be the case with a broker, but the place of origin, so wherever the broker would source them from, wherever they're raised.
I just don't think that's enforceable. I don't see how a pet store owner is going to travel to Wisconsin and look at a breeder, not to mention someone who's making a profit off of this.
All right, I appreciate it.
That's, I mean, it's, yeah.
But you've not seen something like that in the past?
No, I have not.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, I'm kind of troubled, because that, to me, if we could ensure that that were the case, I'd be happy to go forward with it as, you know, as is indicated in this highlighted copy, but if realistically, it's just going to bring us into a lawsuit where everyone's going to go spend money, I don't know that puts us in a better place.
I think it, I think it will. I think it's going to serve the purpose. I, I think this is going to change even how pet stores get pets moving forward. For our community, you know, there might be, you know what, there might be some people that do bad things. There might be some people who do bad things, but we're not going to be able to get everybody doing everything wrong all the time, even though the sheriff thinks he does. But I think this is a step in the right direction. But again, I just feel a real need to protect those other people's rights right now and cause no harm. And, you know, if we've got a problem after we get things going, then, you know, we'll come back and make some more changes. But I just have a real concern that we might fix one problem and start another one. So that's, that's my only concern with that right there. And you know what, this, it could work. It could just solve the whole problem, and then we haven't created a monopoly situation, which I'm also very concerned about. This'll at least keep some type of competitive market in place with individuals that, you know, breed dogs and just love breeding their dogs and sharing them with the public.
Okay, because my, my thought is, if we move to pass the ordinance, as I've modified with a little bit of highlighting on the front page, if that's the version that we moved to pass, if come to find out in six months, the animals are still being sourced the same way, and we're still having the same problem, would you entertain addressing it at that point? Because if this solves it, that's great, I'm just far from convinced that this will be the be-all and end-all. I think this is going to need some follow-up down the road.
I'm always teachable. I am. So you know what, that's so nice, isn't it? So as we're doing this, and we notice things, other things needing changed.
Okay, because I, I mean, I hate to be pessimistic, but I kind of, I have a concern, given the way the industry has gone, and if this is what we need to do in order to have your support, this is what we need to do in order to have your support, but I'm just, I'm putting everyone on notice, not you specifically, that if this doesn't cut it, I'm going to come back with something else, because I'm not satisfied to simply pass an ordinance saying we're doing something if it doesn't have the impact that we're seeking to have, so...
I know, and I know we're trying it, and I know you love my analogy about the drunk driving, right?
Sure.
But it's, it's a reasonable thought, you know, and protection for good people out there, that we don't pull away rights. So, you know, it's, we have to, we have to leverage that up here, you know, we have to make policy that's good for everybody. And so I'm always real cautious to move too quickly, that if I remove rights from one group to give to another problem that we have, you know, you just got to weigh it, and I just know you got to go slowly with it. And this is, this is just where I'm at, that I'll be able to do this and sleep at night.
Okay, all right. And I'll, just for Ms. Bentley's edification as well, this was, I believe, yesterday I sent you an email that had two versions?
At 4:00 PM?
Uh, if it looked like this on the front of one of them, there was only one that looked like this, so I think that sounds about right.
And that's with the addition on page five?
Let me take a look.
Of the expressly conditioned language that would allow the additional regulations subsequent?
Yeah, there's a, there's a strike-through that's highlighted, and then there's also additional text that follows that. So yeah, that's, that's the only version.
But it's going to be modified to include a resolution that will follow, based on how we enforce it.
But I don't think we have to change this at this point.
Yeah.
No, I think, I think we're okay for now, and I think it's a start, but again, I think we're going to be back here to address this particular language and what we need to do once we get a better grasp in terms of what the impact of this is, so...
And maybe some of our teeth in that, if we have to settle for this, some of our teeth would be, you know, see if, maybe something you could check out, Eden, of requiring proof, because maybe that's part of what the sheriff's inspection is, proof that they're buying from hobby breeders, or that they're getting from rescues. Chances are, they're going to get from probably hobby breeders over a rescue, if they can find hobby breeders to buy from, because, you know, more often than not, a lot of rescues have dogs that are not puppies, you know, and a lot of rescues wouldn't give dogs to a retail place, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, I think I'm, I'm more or less there.
And if it's burdensome to the sheriff's office, I'm sure we'll hear about it.
I have no doubt. All right, so at least, at least for the time being, I'm going to move to advertise the ordinance as we've addressed it, and I'll just give my copy to Ms. Bentley so that she can provide it, to have it added into the minutes, so we're clear on which version we're dealing with. And just to be absolutely clear before anyone even thinks we're seconding it, have you all had a real good opportunity to make sure that that version contains what you want and doesn't contain what you don't want? I'm not trying to pull one over on anyone or anything, but I just want to make sure, because there've been so many versions floating around, that, you know, we haven't even one individual come up to speak this evening that was referencing something that I don't think was in anything that was up for discussion on the agenda?
I could almost read it in my sleep, the one you sent out over the weekend, and with the yellow highlighted stuff, I'm good.
Okay, okay. All right, so that's, that's my motion.
I have a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Okay, let me get back to my agenda here.
Thank you all for coming out, I really do appreciate hearing from everyone.
Okay, we already did item J, so item K, public comments, we have Shanna Lloyd, I believe, if they're still here. Is it Shanna?
Shauna.
Shauna.
Good evening, how are you guys?
Good, how are you? Name your address, please.
Um, Shauna Lloyd, Partnership Specialist for the 2020 Census, 101 Marietta Street, but I'm based out of Orange County. The census comes around, and it's a year out, so we're here introducing ourselves and just letting you know what's new about the census, what's coming forward for your residents. Since 1790, we've been taking a census every 10 years on the year ending in zero. The population count is really important for two main reasons. One is our apportionment and our representation in the House. Last decennial, we gained two additional seats due to the increase in population in Florida. In 2020, we're estimated to gain another one, possibly two seats. So the count and it being accurate and complete is really important to Florida. The second is the appropriation of all the federal funding that is allocated due to the population. These are programs such as adoption assistance, Pell Grants, Head Start, LIHEP, roads and highways. There's a 25-page document that tells you all of the federal programs that are affected by this count. So we here in Florida, we're looking at something to the tune of $29 billion, and that's per decade. So it's a lot of money that we leave on the table when we're not accurately counted at the state, county, and city level. So we at the census, we tend to form complete count committees, we found it works best. A complete count committee is basically a group of trusted voices from within that particular region or community, and they decide how they want us to help them outreach to their residents. So we reach out and work with them. The other reason we form complete count committees is to let everyone know about the jobs we have available. We are the largest peacetime operation here. We employ people from the areas that they're going to be working in, so they're familiar with the areas that they're in, and typically, the jobs are work from home, they have high pay, they pay weekly, because they know that they are temporary jobs. So I'm really here to introduce myself, oh, the other thing about the census that's new, I had too much time left.